Board member Deborah Napper is ill and not able to be with us tonight. We do have board member Pat Tillman and board member Diane Bellamy Smalls that will be, that are joining us on Zoom, so they are plugged in and present. I'd like to call on board member Linda Welborn to open this up.
someone very special to Guilford County Schools. Former Guilford County School Chief Financial Officer Sharon Osment passed away on December 19th, 2021. Sharon was a fixture of Guilford County Schools for 38 years, having worked her way up from copy machine operator to eventually becoming the Chief Financial Officer, affectionately known as Oz. Osment was named the Governmental Chief Financial Officer of the Year by the Triad Business Journal in 2010, and won numerous accolades from the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officer Association. When she retired in 2012, she oversaw a $680 million budget, thousands of employees in financial services, technology services, maintenance and building services, and child nutrition, and North Carolina's third-largest school system, and one of the top 50 largest school systems in the United States. Thanks to her visionary, compassionate, and groundbreaking leadership as one of the state's first female chief financial officers, Sharon's efforts will continue to transform our students' learning and lives for decades to come. I will now read aloud the resolution honoring Sharon's life and work. Whereas Sharon Oz Osment, a beloved Guilford County Schools leader and community volunteer, passed away on December 19th, 2021 after a valiant battle against cancer; and whereas Oz retired in 2012 after a stellar 38-year career with Guilford County Schools, having worked her way up from copy machine operator to chief financial officer; and whereas Oz was a proud Page High School pirate who joined the Guilford County Schools' print shop as a newly-minted graduate and quickly charmed everyone she met with her tireless work ethic and buoyant personality; and whereas Oz had a formidable intelligence and worked her way through community college to an associate degree in accounting, followed by a degree in business administration and economics from Greensboro College; and whereas those who knew her best say that Oz's superpower as a leader came from her deep understanding of people and her fervent belief in the dignity of all work and all working people; and whereas despite her many accomplishments, Oz was humble, strong, and kind, and was known universally as a gifted storyteller with a wicked sense of humor and the ultimate team player, an attribute honed during her days as one of Page High School's star athletes and as the matriarch of her beloved family; and whereas Oz loved Guilford County Schools and Guilford County Schools loved her back, promoting her several times as she worked her way up from a copy machine operator to accounting technician to interim treasurer to budget analyst to supervisor of financial accounting to director of financial accounting to executive director of financial accounting, being named Chief Financial Officer and then interim superintendent in 2008; and whereas Oz was truly Guilford County Schools' own Wizard of Oz, with one major difference: what was found behind the curtain was real. And whereas Oz was a stickler for accuracy and known for her integrity in all financial dealings, she helped establish the district's storied history of clean audits and award-winning financial reporting, a tradition that continues today; and whereas Oz was named the Governmental Chief Financial Officer of the Year by the Triad Business Journal in 2010, and won numerous accolades from the Association of School Business Officials and the Government Finance Officer Association; and whereas Oz skillfully led Guilford County Schools through the devastating Great Recession, one of the worst financial disasters in American history, and worked diligently to find jobs for all employees, avoiding the massive layoffs seen in other school systems across North Carolina and nationally; and whereas Oz, as a leader, did not back away from tough decisions and difficult decisions, and many credit her eloquent and passionate advocacy with turning a board vote from a possible no to a resounding yes in favor of the STEM Early College at North Carolina A&amp;T State University; and whereas thanks to her visionary, compassionate, groundbreaking leadership as one of the state's first female chief financial officer, her efforts will continue to transform our students' learning and life outcomes for decades to come; and whereas when Oz retired in 2012 to care for her mother and her beautifully diverse and blended family, she oversaw a $680 million budget, thousands of employees in financial services, technology services, maintenance and building services, child nutrition in North Carolina's third-largest school system and one of the top 50 largest school systems in the United States; and whereas the Guilford County Schools and the Guilford County Board of Education thank her family and her beloved wife Kaylene with sharing Oz with us for nearly 40 years. And therefore, be it resolved, we, the Guilford County Board of Education, extend our heartfelt condolences to all those who knew and loved Oz. Please know that our more than 9,000 employees, 70,000 families, and Guilford County community grieve with you, and that our deepest hope is that all will take comfort in knowing that Oz's legacy of love and leadership will remain cherished and impactful for generations to come. Signed this day, 11th day of January, 2022. We have several family members of Sharon's family, several members of Sharon's family here tonight, and family members, will you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Just want to just lift up Sharon, who was someone that was very beloved personally and professionally to me, and I got to know all of you through her and love you all as well. Thank you for being here tonight, and please accept our deepest condolences. I want to take a minute to acknowledge also the life of Dale Metz, a former Guilford County School principal and namesake of the Herbin Metz Education Center, who recently passed away. We will celebrate his life at a future meeting. But just want to take a minute. I know that Oz was truly a fixture here, and Jill, and Anita, and Linda, and others that worked under here, Whitney, Angie, of course, as we say, her legacy continues, Dr. Morrison, you know, just so many to name, that Oz was amazing, you know, and she could fix just about anything. And so, so, so thank you, thank her, and, and we love her. We will now recognize our January Employee of the Month, Michelle Perry. Will you please come to the podium? Welcome. Cafeteria manager Michelle Perry was with her staff at Northern Elementary on Wednesday morning, as she is each school day morning, ready to sample the meal they prepared for the students. It's a ritual as she and her team continue each day to ensure that food is delicious and ready to serve. But that day was a little different because Perry was surprised with the news that she had been named the January Guilford County Schools' Employee of the Month. Perry was nominated by staff members at Northern Elementary, including Principal Dr. Robert Richmond, who wrote, "Mrs. Perry is an amazing manager, but most of all, she cares. We noticed that Mrs. Perry and her staff eat lunch prior to the kids coming in." And when asked about this, she responded by saying, "This was quality control." She said she would not feed kids food that she would not eat herself. If it, if she tasted, then she can tell if the taste is off. This is definitely something I can appreciate as a parent and principal. The food in our cafeteria is so good that most days, I and other staff buy cafeteria food. He goes on, "She and her staff decorate based on holidays, interact with students, and never run out of hot food. She is always pleasant and great to her staff. Mrs. Perry is definitely deserving of this award for the time and care that she puts into serving our students." Perry received a $50 gift card courtesy of the Greensboro J.C.'s during the month of January. Her photo will hang at the district's central office at the Northern Elementary and at the Greensboro J.C.'s office. At this time, I'd like to ask board member Linda Welborn to read aloud the certificate honoring Michelle.
Guilford County Board of Education, certificate of recognition presented to Michelle Perry, Northern Elementary, for Employee of the Month, sponsored by the J.C.'s, January 2022, signed by Superintendent Sharon Contreras and our Chairwoman, Deana Hayes. And I want to say, there is nothing more important to a child than good food. My 65-year-old husband still talks about the cafeteria ladies and the great dinner they get. So, thank you, your appreciation to the happiness of every child in this country.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this award. I really appreciate being recognized for this. I couldn't do any of this that I do day in and day out without my amazing staff, and thank you to the leadership of Northern Elementary for nominating me, and thank you guys for presenting me this award. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mrs. Perry. I don't know how you do that. I always make somebody else taste something I think is going to be bad, so I'm, I'm really inspired. And finally, tonight, we will highlight our district's commitment to arts education. The arts are part of a balanced education, providing America's learners with crucial skills and knowledge they need to be productive, college, and career-ready individuals. Accordingly, all students have the right to an arts education that includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts, taught by certified arts educators in partnership with community providers. Despite being part of a well-rounded, well-rounded education as stated in federal education law, the Every Student Succeeds Act, too often, arts education is marginalized in America's public schools. An education without the arts is inadequate, given the dramatic ways arts experience change student lives academically and personally. The arts are key to reigniting students' learning in the post-COVID-19 era and preparing them for success and happiness in a complicated 21st-century world, to wit, arts education nurtures healthy, inclusive communities where all points of view are respected, promotes cultural awareness and civil discourse, supports the social and emotional well-being of students, and fosters a welcoming and safe school environment, and provides multiple pathways for every student's creative voice and the communication of their ideas. Guilford County Schools has long maintained its commitment to the arts, investing resources at a time when many other districts were pulling back. Guilford County Schools has been named one of the Best Communities for Music Education for three years running, and continues innovative programming such as the Arts Integration Program and Lyceum. In partnership with the National Coalition for Core Arts Standards, we pledge to support and grow our award-winning arts program, education programs in the 2021, 2022 school year and beyond. At this time, I'd like to ask board member Kim Irby to read aloud the resolution declaring Arts Are Education.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hayes. The Arts Are Education Resolution. Whereas all students have the right to an arts education that includes dance, media arts, music, theater, and visual arts taught by certified arts educators in partnership with community providers. Whereas arts education has the power to change students' lives. Whereas arts education is a key to reigniting students' learning in a post-COVID-19 world. Whereas arts education helps nurture healthy, inclusive communities where all points of view are respected. Whereas arts education experiences help students understand their own cultural roots and appreciate others' cultural roots and traditions. Whereas arts education supports the social and emotional well-being of students and fosters a more positive, safer school environment. Whereas arts education is part of the well-rounded education for every student as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and in state law. Therefore, be it resolved that the Guilford County Board of Education is committed to fostering arts education as part of a well-rounded curriculum for Guilford County School students. This 11th day of January is signed by our chairperson and Dr. Contreras, our superintendent.
Thank you. We would like to recognize all of the amazing people in our district that lead our arts education and our staff for all of the work that they do. We are now at public comments. I know that many people have been ushered in, I don't know if it's because it's cold outside, but so many of you are here, I won't have to repeat for, for everyone coming in unless I see someone, someone coming in from the building, that you have three minutes to make your comments. When the light is amber, you will have 15 seconds left, and when the light is red and you hear a beep, your time is up, and we ask you to please wrap up your comments so that we are able to hear the other people that are signed up tonight. As you approach the podium, or when you get to the podium, please give your name and address, and you can pin your comments. The first person on our list is John Moyle, followed by Sherry Pickett. Welcome.
I am John Moyle. I live at 3901 Battleground Avenue, apartment 54, here in Greensboro. And when I was in school, I was taught America is a great country because of two important things: the open democracy on which our country is, our government is based, and the diversity of the community of people who make up America. I still believe these things are true, but in the 60 years since I was in public schools, I have learned that both our democracy and our sense of community are limited and continue to, we continue to have issues in both of those areas. So, the question is, what does a great nation do when it realizes it has fallen short? It gets up, admits its errors, makes whatever amends, and creates whatever remedies are required, and moves forward. Now, in school, I was also taught that public education is a cornerstone in the foundation of our democracy, and that is why I'm speaking to you tonight. I'm depending on our public schools to continue to lay the foundation for making things right in the United States, so that we can move forward as one, strong, tightly-united country to face the many issues that we're going to have to address over the next several decades. There are three things that I'm specifically concerned about, and then I'm asking the Board of, the, okay, the Board, I'll just say that since my memory has failed me. The first is, I want to emphasize the importance of truth. Please teach our children the truth about our past, and teach them what they can do to make the necessary repairs so we can all move forward together. The second is equity. Let every child know they are valued and a necessary part of our community, and demonstrate this by providing each child in our diverse community with a complete and equitable education. And the third is participation. Democracy is not something you have, it's something you do. Teach every child what it takes to create and maintain real freedom, equity, and justice here in the United States. I'm not a teacher, and I'm not going to try to tell you how to accomplish this, okay? You know best how to proceed, but I, and most other people here in Guilford County, will stand in support of your efforts to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Pickett, followed by Peters Zakaris, and I'm sure I got that wrong again. Welcome.
Good evening. Cherry Pickett, Summerfield. I am a member of Take Back Our Schools, and I am about to tell you a story that might make some feel bad. It is about our modern-day, 2020-21 Trail of Tears. And it began in early 2020 when Governor Cooper shut down our lives. And the case is not that we all wanted to be in our homes, feeling locked in, stop earning a living, isolate our children from friends, activities, and the stopping of education instilling fear to the point that many children lost hope and have killed themselves. You're continuing us down this path by forcing masking, testing healthy children who are not sick, putting them in quarantine, isolation rooms, sometimes making them feel like that they are criminals, and the injecting of children against parents' consent. 50% of PCR tests are false positives, and I can give you that information. GCS employees are intelligent adults and fully informed of their bodies, yet are being forced to wear masks, be tested, and get COVID shots against their will. As with the first Trail of Tears, this current one is also, has forced people to have to move, lose their jobs, move to unknown places not suitable to their traditions, unable to pay for food because of loss of job, pay for medicine, and they've left family behind. Have you looked at the website run by the CDC and the FDA, OpenFares.com? Under the COVID vaccine tab, 1 million adverse reactions from the COVID shot, 21,000 deaths, 3,000 miscarriages, 36 permanent disabilities, just to name a few. And it is illegal to falsely report anything onto this website. So, it is checked often, and it's, the information's accurate. The old trail also, 5,000 lives were lost in the span of 30 years. The new trail today, one-half a million lives lost in the span of two years, not counting those who tested positive and then died with COVID. And why doesn't Dr. Van talk about treatments? Our children are the victims here, not me, not you, or Dr. Van, or the commissioners, but our children. They are suffering from the adults' greed and arrogance.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Peters Zakaris, followed by Tricia DeBeer. Mr. Zakaris is not here. Welcome, Ms. DeBeer, followed by Elizabeth Biddle. Good evening.
My name is Tricia DeBeer. I'm a minister, and I'm not a parent or a grandparent of a child in the school, but I have concern about all the children in this community. What do we want our children to learn? What do we want their values to be? I hope they will become adults who are responsible, respectful, and compassionate. This is what informed my husband and me as we made decisions about parenting. I'll tell you a story. One day, our 12-year-old son decided to vandalize an empty building with five of his friends. He was caught and brought down to the police department. We wanted him to face up to the truth of the harm he caused, not to be guilty, but to be accountable. When the officer required them to clean the building and to do other community service, we wholeheartedly supported that requirement. Our priority was not our child's comfort, because an important lesson lay on the other side of his discomfort. I did not try to make him guilty, but I did want him to be accountable. And thankfully, he turned into a beautiful human being and father, living the values of responsibility, respect, and compassion. Now, there are some parallels between this story of parenting and the current issue about what and how our racial history should be addressed in schools. I believe that those who prioritize a child's comfort are missing the fact that some important lessons lie on the other side of that discomfort. Because when we learn something new, or something that implicates us in the darker parts of our history, that's important for our growth. Guilt is not the point. Accountability is. I believe the majority of citizens in Guilford County want teachers to be free to teach the whole truth and to raise the issue of equity as children learn. I ask that the Board support teachers in raising these important issues and continue to support the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion as a crucial resource to teachers in this difficult task. Our democracy, our future even, depends on raising up adults who have the values of responsibility, respect, and compassion. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Elizabeth Biddle, followed by Representative Reverend Amos Quick.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth, or Lizzie Biddle. I live at 1020 Jefferson Road. I'm not originally from North Carolina or Guilford County. I moved here to attend two of our area universities, first for undergraduate and then graduate studies. I met my now-husband and have stayed. I want to continue to stay. I want to make Greensboro and Guilford County my home for the long term. I want to raise a family here. I currently volunteer in my community. I have volunteered for Guilford County Schools. I'm an active member of a local religious congregation. I work for a locally-owned business. All of that is to say, I see the benefits of making our public school system the best that it can be for all of our students. Public education is important. It really is an issue of freedom. Without education, you are not free in many, many ways. Education tells you about the world and the possibilities in life. If you don't know what is possible, it is hard to set goals. It's hard to let alone think of the future and prosper. Education isn't just about filling your head with facts, or missed facts, as we heard earlier. It also gives you access to multiple perspectives, multiple sources, how, allows you to learn how to make your own decision. Unfortunately, our public education has not been equal for all students. As much as I love Guilford County, we are not unique in many of the challenges we face. As you all know, as board members, Guilford County Schools has an achievement gap. That means that students of color, black, Latino, indigenous, Asian-American are not having the same outcomes, pre-K all the way up to graduation rates, as their white counterparts. This isn't okay, and we need to ask why. We really need to ask why. Why is this happening? Either we believe that households of color are so inept, and they are the ones to blame, although I don't believe that is the case, or anyone here in this room believes that. We have to look deeper. We haven't asked why. Unfortunately, we are trying to stop and frankly ban that conversation even before it has happened. We need strong leadership. Dr. Contreras, our school board chair, Deana Hayes-Green, and vice chair Winston McGregor have been working to address these issues and have a plan. We need strong community support, bringing us together across our differences, across our political differences, our racial differences, our socioeconomic differences, whether we are black, white, Latino, newcomer, or fifth generation, we are stronger together. We have to see our common humanity. Those who want to take us backward, who want to divide us, who promote profit over and above what's good for the collective. who promote profit over and above what's good for the collective, will end up hurting us all while only a few will benefit. So I urge you all, as elected officials, to come together, and I thank you for all that you've done already. Thank you.
Representative Reverend Amos Quick, followed by Reverend CJ Brinson. Welcome, Reverend Quick.
Good evening. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year to all of you. And thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. I'm Amos Quick, 529 Fox Ridge Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. I'm here this evening actually to offer encouragement and support to you as a board and to Dr. Contreras as our superintendent during these trying times. Running a school board in the best of days is very difficult, particularly when you run one that is the size of a large North Carolina city. I had the benefit of running, of being on the board when we did not have a global pandemic, economic upheaval, environmental crisis, and political turmoil in the country. So I thank all of you for your continued service to this board and to this community, and to Dr. Contreras for her leadership. I want to applaud you also for the partnership between the Guilford County Schools and the Greensboro, cities of Greensboro and High Point. I have visited both bus depots on yesterday and today, and I was, I'm not going to say surprised, I was encouraged and almost overwhelmed by the amount of support that the students who were riding the city transportation had from not only GCS staff, there were principals there when I was there, and SSO was there when I was there, Mr., our Chief of Security was there when I was there, and many volunteers were there. So I wanted to just applaud you on that effort, that partnership that we need. I remember, and Anita Sharp and Dina, Chair Chair Hayes will remember, when we were going back and forth with the city about crossing guards. So it's good to see the cities come together and provide this option, this transportation option for our students. To Dr. Contreras, I want to say to you publicly what I said to your two previous, your two predecessors in times of turmoil, although they didn't have to go through what you're going through. The Bible says in 2 Kings, Chapter 6, that the prophet Elijah and his servant at one point in time were being bombarded, and they were threatened with attack. The servant of the prophet Elijah became very, very nervous and afraid. And he said to Elijah, "What are we going to do? There are so many people attacking us." 2 Kings, Chapter 6, and verse number 16 says that the prophet Elijah, Elisha prayed to God that he would open his servant's eyes so he would see that there are more for us than there are against us. I said that to Mo Green, I said that to Terry Greer. Dr. Contreras, I say that to you. Although sometimes it may seem that the majority is not on your side, the evidence is this, there are over 70,000 students whose families trust this Board of Education and this school system with their children's education. And never, ever forget that. God bless you, stay courageous and bold.
Thank you, Reverend, Representative Reverend Quick. CJ Brinson, followed by Reverend Darren Mitchell. Welcome.
Hard to follow such an act. CJ Brinson, 504 Gorrell Street, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27406. Good evening to the superintendent, Dr. Sharon Contreras, the board chair, Dina Hayes-Green, and all other esteemed members of the board. I have the privilege of representing Black clergy leaders, and I'm a faith-based engagement director with NC Black Alliance, and also a youth pastor at Genesis Baptist Church. But tonight, I stand before you as a father, a father of three children who are students within the school system. I believe it was the philosopher George Santayana who said, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." And as I look around what has happened in our nation, in our state, and here locally, even here at school board meetings, it appears to me that we are headed on a collision course to repeat the most horrors of our history. We are doomed because there are those who are concerned with restricting our history. This is disheartening because when I look at children today, they are the result of a community who have come together through painful struggles to uplift all people, to affirm all people, and to love all people. The children are more together today than they have ever been before. They are the result of the babies of a hip-hop generation. They are aligned with authenticity. They are receptive to truth, no matter how hard or how harsh the realities may be. They are receptive to the truth about horrors. They are acceptable to the truth about violence, the truth about discrimination, the truth about injustice, racism, sexism, and gender inequality. They are receptive, and because they are receptive, they are better individuals, they are better in community, and they are better human beings. So tonight, I just want to say thank you to Dr. Sharon Contreras and for your beyond competent leadership. I want to say thank you to Chairwoman Dina Hayes-Green for your continued commitment to equity. And I want to say thank you to all of the board members who have worked and are committed to ensuring that all children receive a culturally-relevant education here in the school system. And most importantly, I want to thank you all for your commitment to truth. For we know that the truth shall set us free. We know that the truth produces hope. The truth shapes community. The truth develops children, and the truth creates better human beings. I'm CJ Brinson. Thank you and for allowing me to share with you tonight.
Thank you. Reverend Darren Mitchell. Oh, Reverend Mitchell, followed by Reverend Curtis Brown. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Madam Chair, board members, Madam Superintendent, staff and members of the Guilford County community, good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Darren Mitchell. I'm a citizen of Guilford County, a member of the faith community, and a zealous advocate for peace, justice, and love for all members of the human family. And I beg leave to make the following remarks. Amidst the very bleak and abysmal period in human history, as we navigate our way through a global pandemic coupled with a very divisive social order, I stand to offer words of gratitude and concern. Without question, you have made bricks without straw and have pioneered and persevered. Of a truth, this has not been an easy journey for any of us. As a faith leader, we've braved through many challenges and pressed our way amidst a myriad of obstacles. And while the concerns attendant with our current situation mount daily, it is important that we raise our voices and express our perspectives relative to this divisive and acidic rhetoric being spewed and spread around this county and beyond. While there are various viewpoints regarding this pandemic, the numbers do not lie. This virus is surging ferociously, and many are contracting this virus again and again and again. The language surrounding these and many issues is extremely explosive. And as a leader, I oppose the incendiary tactics that are used to create chasms and neglect the weightier matters of equity, justice, and peace. What is right outweighs who is right, and I stand for right. I, along with many faith leaders in this community, stand with you as you together, as you bridge the breach and span the gap that is widening across this county and across this country. The work of our superintendent and this board is to be commended. And we will not rest until we reduce the exigency of this virus and navigate these social choppy waters of this violent, volatile social order. My word to you and to all of us is that we must stand firm, and we stand with you, and be reminded that God stands for those, and God stands with those who will not bow nor bend in the fell clutch of circumstance. Will you continue to press your way, knowing that the faith community is with you, and that we stand in prayer for you? And whatever comes and whatever goes, we stand in the tradition of the one who reminds us that if God be for us, who can be against us? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reverend Mitchell. Reverend Curtis Brown, followed by Reverend Bradley Hunt. Welcome. If you can give your name and address. You have three minutes to make your comments. When the amber light comes on, you have 15 seconds left. Welcome, Reverend Brown.
Thank you so very much, Madam Chair, and to all of you who are present tonight. I'm Curtis Brown. I am a resident of Guilford County. I have been very fortunate to have passed at the New Light Missionary Baptist Church now for almost 47 years. I have served as the Religious Chair of the State of North Carolina for the N double A C P. And I stand with those of the faith community. Really, after hearing my brother, Dr. Darren Mitchell, so eloquently lay out what I would say, and I would only be repetitive tonight, I do want to say to our superintendent that I support you. I thank God for your faithfulness, for your relentless and untiring efforts to make this county better, especially for our children. You get so little praise and acknowledgement for your labor. I come more than anything to encourage you tonight to please stand. As Deborah, stand even though there are those whose voices seem to be so loud at this time, a time when all of us are stressed, dealing with a pandemic that has taken the lives of so many. As one of the faith community, I cannot tell you the number of eulogies I've dealt, I've delivered, to families that were grieving because of our insensitivity towards each other. We are everything but altruistic in our concern. I heard someone say just today, who had had the coronavirus twice, that she really didn't care if others contracted it. I truly believe in our First Amendment rights, the right of assembly, the right of expression, the right of religion, and the right to petition. I believe in those rights. But when someone else's right endangers me, then it seems fairly clear to me that their rights are negated by their actions. I don't have the right to go into a crowded theater and holler fire. That's a violation of law. And in the human order, none of us have the right to claim space that others have to share and endanger them. That's just common sense. The problem is, I think too many of us have gotten so common and so insatiable with their own purpose in being that they forget the rights of others. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Reverend Brown. Reverend Bradley, followed by Dr. Frank Thomas. Welcome, Reverend Bradley. You heard my
Thank you.
Instructions to Reverend Brown. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bradley Hunt, and I reside at 408 Griffin Street, Clansville, 27301. I share in Dr. Brown's remarks, and of course with others who have come before me, there's really not much else to say. I did want to offer, Madam Superintendent and members of the Guilford County Board of Education, the book that I love teaches that you will know the truth, and the truth will set you free. We find ourselves in a moment where it is becoming increasingly difficult to distinguish the truth from lies and lies from the truth. The truth is, every child deserves an opportunity to reach their full potential. Furthermore, every Black student deserves access to excellent teaching, equitable resources, and a safe learning environment. We need strategies and investments that build accountability to advance the success of children of color. I say to you this evening, we must not allow the lies and deceptions of others to distract us from the things we must do to empower our young people in this season. I invite you to stand firm on the truth and to experience the liberation that one can only find in the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Frank Thomas, followed by J.L. Garvin. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Madam Superintendent. The Bible writes, and I'm Frank Thomas, Pastor Mount Zion Baptist Church of High Point, North Carolina. I am not a citizen of Guilford County, nor do I have children who attend Guilford County Schools. But I would offer that there's probably not too many more strong supporters of Guilford County Schools than I. Many of you know that I chair or co-chair the School Bond Campaign, and I'm working every day to try to make sure that our schools are adequate for our children. Romans 10, we may know it, "Brother, in my heart's desire and prayer to God, for Israel is that they might be saved; for I bear them record that they have the zeal of God, but not according to knowledge. For they being ignorant of God's righteousness and going about to establish their own righteousness have not submitted themselves to the righteousness of God. For God, for Christ is the end of the law for righteousness to everyone that believeth." We can have differing opinions, but we cannot have different facts. And I submit to members of the board that you all know the truth about a lot of things that have been shared in our community. So I want to encourage you this evening to not stand by and allow dis and misinformation to go forward in our community. You know the truth. Why would you allow personal attacks against our superintendent without speaking against them? Because I heard somebody say that your silence is agreement. So when you stand silent to those comments, you are saying to those who are speaking that you agree. I would offer to the Take Back Our Schools group, what would you say to the dog that chases the car? What are you going to do when you catch it? So I say to the Take Back Schools group, from whom are you taking it? And to where will you take it? To those who say that the $300 million bond that was passed in 2020 has not been used or is being misused. You know the truth. That $300 million was just a down payment on the $2 billion bill in the master plan. Some object to what our children are being taught and what our children need to be taught. I would ask, what's so terrible about your past that you don't want to teach your children to help them with their future? I want to encourage you, members of the board, don't stand and sit idly by when people are attacking our district. For whether you realize it or not, they are also attacking you.
Thank you. J.L. Garvin, followed by Monica Walker. Welcome, Ms. Garvin. If you will give your name and address, you have three minutes to speak. And when you see the amber light, you'll have 15 seconds left. When you have the red light, just to wrap up your comments. So welcome.
Good evening to the Superintendent, Dr. Sharon Contreras, Board Chairwoman, Dina Hayes-Green, and the rest of the esteemed board members. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de hablar aquí hoy. In English, this means, "Thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to speak today." I'm J.L. Garvin, an eighth-grade A honor roll student at Swan Middle School here in Guilford County. I live at 504 Gorrell Street. I'm a student athlete on both the volleyball and track teams. I also attended Jones Elementary School where I participated, where I still participate in the Spanish immersion program. It was a gift, it is a gift to be able to be exposed and to learn Spanish. But I don't want to only learn Spanish. I want to learn about the history of all cultures and the way that we are all connected in humanity. I want to learn these things and other things that will help to prepare me for a global world. I'm fortunate enough to live in a community where I have neighbors who are from Latin American countries in the Democratic Republic of Congo. My community has a rich tradition of welcoming other cultures and learning about them. My faith community is rooted in serving and supporting marginalized communities and addressing social and racial justice. It has been because of my upbringing and the teaching of my parents, CJ and Jashon T. Brinson, that I have had the privilege of learning these things. Sabrinson, that I have had the privilege of learning these things and the truths that are not taught in the schools about this country. The majority of students in this country are denied that privilege in our educational system. It is important that students are taught the truth. It helps to prepare us to become analytical thinkers. I'm incredibly grateful to be led in a county led by the amazing Dr. Sharon Contreras and the other members, other leaders, who want to help us to become the next generation of thinkers and leaders by preparing us for this in every way. Sometimes it feels like we exist in an educational system that is going backwards instead of forward. Now is the time to broaden our educational outcomes to ensure a world that is ready to embrace us all, and we are prepared to connect to the whole world. Gracias y tienen un buen resto de su día. Thank you and have a good rest of your day.
Thank you. I'm very proud to have you as a student, and I'm particularly proud at Swan Middle School, Representative in District Eight. So thank you. Monica Walker, followed by Richard Herman.
Happy New Year, Dr. Contreras, and to our esteemed Board Chair, Dina Hayes-Green, and all of you who serve as board members to the Guilford County School District. I am Monica Walker, former Executive Director of the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, where I served for 12 years. I live at 608, don't know where I live, 608 Martin Street. I have watched as I both a member of the staff of this esteemed school district for the 12 years in which I served, and I've watched since then, board meetings. And in the opening and the public comments, every board meeting, I say this to you, Dr. Contreras, it seems as if you have more power than you probably ever imagined. Because based on those public comments that are often offered, it appears that you make it snow. I don't know if you know that, and then you make the streets unable or unsafe to travel. You allowed our schools, I'm sorry, you allowed our schools' infrastructure to deteriorate, and then you refuse to direct money to fix them. You apparently concocted COVID-19 in one of our school labs and decreed that every person who suffered with COVID-19 would have to wear masks, and those who don't. Obviously, you have such disdain for bus drivers that you caused them to contract COVID, then caused them to call in sick to create a shortage, a bus shortage, a bus driver shortage. And now for sure, you must also not like teenagers, because you are having them to ride city buses to get to school because of what you did to the bus drivers. And Siri is agreeing with me. The list of your faults are endless. If these sound ludicrous to any of you, it's because they are. No rational-thinking person could or should believe or endorse these ideas. But apparently, here in our district, they do. Dr. Contreras, this is not about you, and at the same time, it is. With the exception of COVID, every one of these issues existed before you came and will be here to greet the next superintendent when you are gone. They were the burden of Jerry Weiss, Terry Greer, and Mo Green. These issues plague every school system in this nation and don't belong to any one superintendent, but belong to the entirety of this community. They are deeply embedded issues, and they are compounded by race. Thank you for your dogged pursuit of equity in spite of all of the attacks that have been launched at you. No matter our race or what neighborhood we're from, and I hope, and I believe this, most of us recognize that teachers and school administrators in our local schools have been on the front line of this pandemic, doing their best for our children. These teachers often view teaching not just as a job, but as a calling and a way to help all children to survive. But there are those of us who want us to believe that somehow our schools, full of teachers who adore children, are actually factories for programming students to be racist and to hate this country. That's absurd. Dr. Contreras, you were appointed to lead in this district, and I'm so grateful to all of those who have come tonight to encourage you to do that thing that you were charged to do. Thank you for standing in a time when many would fall.
Thank you. Richard Herman, followed by April Gueron. Hope I'm saying your name correct. Welcome, Mr. Herman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Richard Herman, a 901 Jennifer Lane, High Point, North Carolina, and proud member of this school system as a teacher. I'm here to address, hopefully, I've been at times last time, the vote that was made last week, last school board meeting, on the school bonuses for the teachers and GCS employees. I was at the last school board meeting and was amazed at the discussion, and to be honest, the lack of preparation that was on display on this topic. I and other school employees spoke on this issue at the November school board meeting. Thankfully, at that meeting, Ms. Napier, if I am pronouncing her name right, she's not here, brought up a motion to address this issue. It was so discouraging to hear the conversation that the board had on this issue of the teacher bonuses at that meeting. The motion, where Dr. Contreras, the superintendent, to come up with a plan barely passed. As you guys know, all five adjacent school districts, including Thomasville City Schools and Ashburn City Schools, have all agreed to pay their employees an average of $4,000 bonus. Yet Guilford County Schools agreed that their employees should get $1,500 bonus. Now, this board was brought to this decision, I believe, because, not because of the teachers deserved it, but because our school had to do something, because the other school systems are already acting. We were lagging. I try to teach my students to act on their convictions in life. Do not act on something because others do it. We passed a bonus not because we wanted to, but because we had to. Now, here's where we stand now. You know, in Dr. Seuss's book, The Lorax, The Lorax tells the once where he speaks for the trees. Well, I speak for the teachers. And our teachers are leaving at an alarming rate, because the environment is better at adjacent school systems. The only people that are happy right now are the other school systems, because they are recruiting our teachers in my school. The school I represent, just on my floor, we've lost four teachers so far this school year, since the beginning of the year, to adjacent school districts, because the job and their pay is better in the other districts. I also know of four more teachers on my floor, just on my floor, not my building, the floor, that have a high probability of leaving this year for more money going to another school system. These school systems are raiding our employees when they can show them the increases that they're offering. Each time I've had the honor to address the school board, I'm thanked for my service as an educator. I appreciate that, and I appreciate what you value, but the value spoke loudly at the last school board meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. April Gueron, followed by Autumn Webb. Jim Morris, followed by Michael Logan, oh, I'm sorry. Autumn Webb? Oh, excellent. Autumn Webb, followed by Jim Morgan. Jim Morris.
I'm Autumn Webb. Live in Greensboro. I would like to first say, I am not one of those that think you made it snow, or that you hate teenagers. But I would like to address the bus deficit. So as a previous public transportation rider and Dudley graduate, I'm deeply concerned for our babies' safety, as far as putting them on public transportation. We put background checks, Where's My Bus apps, written parent permission to get off and on at other stops in place with our GCS transportation, to ensure the safe arrival of our students. But we're now asking those same students to sit next to possible parolees, overaged citizens that may or may not be on the sex offenders registry. In addition, the precautionary measures that are taken to reduce the spread of COVID in the schools' controlled and supervised environments will now be compromised, as many of our fellow citizens travel to and from hospitals and COVID testing sites, as well as those that are completely unaware and unrestricted by the school's precautionary measures. Due to lack of time, I'd like to name a few of the suggestions that we thought of. A later start time, including bus transportation in the budget and educational agreement with the state. Moving some of the drivers from other schools, making longer routes and multiple routes for those schools that have more drivers, so they can accommodate the move. Though the current plan was executed without many major discrepancies Monday, and with all hands on deck, they won't continuously be there to assist. And GTA and parent drivers cannot be the only viable option. I implore us to review some of these options, so that we can all ensure safety.
Thank you. Jim Morris, followed by Michael Logan. Welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
James Morris or Jim Morris. I'm at 7707 Cedar Chase Drive, Greensboro, North Carolina. I want to say thanks for taking my comments and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
We just found out that up to 40% of COVID patients hospitalized are there for reasons other than COVID, and that over 75% of the deaths are from people with four or more comorbidities and were not that well to begin with. That was from Rochelle Walensky of the CDC. Also, at the last county commissioners' meeting, James Upchurch made some good points in asking Health Director Dr. Julia Van why Wake-Mecklenburg and Buncombe Counties have up to 60% more COVID cases in Guilford, even though they've kept their mask mandates and we didn't. She didn't have an accurate, she didn't have a real answer for that. Commissioner Justin Conrad suggested she read a report quoted by Dr. Anthony Fauci, saying mask mandates don't reduce hospitalizations and deaths. On Face the Nation, January 2 of this year, former FDA Commissioner Dr. Scott Gottlieb said, and I quote, "We now understand that a cloth mask is not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission. It could protect you through droplet transmission of something like the flu, but not something like this coronavirus," end quote. And there's also many reports on how these mandates are hurting children. The CDC also reported that suicide attempts for teenage girls are up 51% for the period of February 21st to March 20th of 2021, compared to the same period of 2019. Electronic devices are already hurting communication skills for our youngest, and now they have to wear a mask all the time. Jane Crawford of CBS reported on Face the Nation that kids will be paying the price for our COVID policies for the rest of their lives, and how that was underreported. Then, she was quietly censored by her own network. So if they don't work and they cause irreparable harm to our children, why? Why do we keep persisting on this? If anyone who wanted to get their children vaccinated hasn't done so by now, then they really don't want to. It's been recently brought to our attention that school districts across the county are signing COVID-compliant regulation contracts to access ESSR money given by the Biden Administration. Part of those regulations are keeping kids masked. If this is true, there's a serious conflict of interest, putting money before children's best interest. If you keep pursuing this torturous mandate that was never supposed to last for this long, I predict there will be class action lawsuits for the damage that you're doing to our children. If I could pull my kids out now and homeschool them, I would, which is sad to say, because five years ago, I was proud to say that my kids that went to one of the best school districts in North Carolina. Not anymore. Please leave our children alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Logan is our final speaker.
Thank you for allowing me to speak here. My name is Michael Logan. I live at 5202 Rambling Road, Greensboro, North Carolina. We have a busing problem in Guilford County. Now, when you have a problem, you need to have a solution. And I think we can come up with a two-pronged solution. First off, we need to work on the employee pool, potential employees that we could hire for busing. The second is retention. And if we do not do those two things, our bus drivers are going to be aging out. And that is what we are facing with in Guilford County right now, and across the state, and across the nation. So, as Guilford County, we should be a leader. To be a bus driver, you need to be 18 years old, six months of driving experience, hold a Class B, Class C, have a P and S endorsement, have a high school bus driver's certificate. Those are all they need. Now, in California, they're thinking very, they're thinking out of the box. At this time, there is a school, Patterson High School in Patterson, California. They have opened up a CDL program within their schools. Most of our bus drivers that drive for us now, that are my age, drove buses when they were in high school. They were 16 and a half years old. They are aging out. We need to replace them. Let's bring high school kids in. Let's train them. We would literally be providing more training for these high school kids than we do for our bus drivers that we hire now. We could train them for the whole year, or for the semester if they were on a block schedule. They would receive more hours than the average bus driver new hire. Industry experts say, in the trucking industry, which is very relative to bus driving, the average age is 54 years old. Now, 54 years old, do you want to be dealing with the discipline issues on the bus? And I have people tell me, well, the discipline issue is, a young person will not be able to handle the discipline. Reality is, bus drivers do not do the discipline. And that's where the retention comes in. Now, with the retention, the driver of a school bus is subject to the, and this is law, North Carolina law, a driver of the school bus is subject to the direction of the superintendent and the superintendent's designee shall have complete authority over the responsibility of the operation in the bus and maintaining of good order and conduct upon such bus, and shall report promptly to the principal any misconduct upon such bus, or disregard or violation of the driver's instructions by any person riding upon such bus. The principal may take such action with reference to the misconduct upon the school bus, or any violation of the instructions of the driver, as he may take if the misconduct occurred on the grounds of the school. If we will fix our discipline problem on the buses, we will retain drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our public speaking segment of our board meeting. We are now at approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have Pat Tillman and Diane Bellamy Smalls on Zoom. Just want to record their vote for approval of the agenda. Okay. Do they have to say something back to me?
Do you want it in the chat, or do you want it verbally?
Does he want, he's asking, do you want to put it in the chat or say it verbally?
That's fine. You can put it in the chat, and Dr. Funderburke, if there is, if there's any opposition, you can just let me know that. Okay, so then that way we can He needs to say that affirmative in his voice? Okay. He said yes. All right. And Diane said yes.
Hopefully, we'll get better at this.
Thank you.
And hopefully, people come in.
Well, it's good that we have this option when there are health issues or other emergencies that keep people away from a board meeting, that they can still participate. We're now at the consent agenda. There was only, there was a request to have one item pulled. That item has been pulled, but I will ask Dr. Contreras. Yes, you did. You did. You did. Okay. Yeah. I was just saying, we just got one request to have it pulled, and it has been pulled. So I'll turn to you, Dr. Contreras, for the consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This evening's consent agenda includes the approval of the December 14 meeting minutes, the personnel report, the City of High Point easement grants for Penn Griffin School of the Arts, and contractual agreements for chiller replacement projects. That concludes this evening's consent agenda for your consideration.
Madam Chair, may I ask one question?
Yes.
One and two. On the chiller replacements, we can't, I can't tell from the information given what alternates were included.
She says she can't tell from the information that is presented what alternates were included. She says she can't tell from the information that is presented what alternates were included. So this is in regards to the chillers?
Yes.
Okay. So the alternates, we actually have a whole list of those. They were just maybe not included in the paperwork. So we can definitely get you a copy of those.
Did you include them all or just some of them?
No, all.
Okay.
They're, all of them are in the packet and online?
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Linda?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Anita?
No.
Pat?
Yes.
And Diane?
Diane says yes.
And Dina says yes. So that passes by a vote of eight to one.
Chairman Hayes, can I, can I say something?
Yes, seven to one.
Okay, on the recommendation cover sheet, you have Jesse Wharton with Comfort Systems totaling 526060. If I go over to the bid tab, the base bid from Comfort Systems was 537045. So I can't tell. Maybe some of the alternates are adds and some are deducts, but it's not defined.
Thank you. And well, you can address that with Ms. Sharp at some point. Is that okay, Anita, that she gets with you and shares that information with you?
Sure.
Great. Thank you. We are now at action items. And Ms. Henry, she's with us on Zoom. Right. This is what I think Ms. Sharp.
You still have to ask for a motion and then discussion.
Okay. I'm just looking for it in here. Is there a motion?
A move.
Second?
Is this to approve the project ordinance that were pulled off the consent agenda? I'll second that.
All right. Discussion, Ms. Sharp?
Yeah. On each of these projects, there were what, 15? So more than that probably. I didn't count them. But in some of these, there are substantial amounts of money that are being moved. One of my schools in particular, High Point Central, 1.3, $1,362,000 is being moved to either system-wide roofing or the newcomer school. There's an amazing amount of work that needs to be done at Central. So I'm not sure about all the other projects, but I'm very familiar with that one. So why would we take the money off of them that was approved in our bonds, I believe, and move it to projects that were not approved in our bonds? That's question number one. And then the High Point Newcomer School was originally slated, and I don't know if the board voted or not, somebody will have to tell me if we did or not, to place the newcomer school at Andrews. It's not going to be at Andrews. It's going to be in the Tomlinson Building in High Point City, High Point Central Campus. And that came as quite a surprise because that was not the plan. And I just don't, I don't understand what happened, what caused it to be changed, and why we didn't spend the money in the project ordinance the way it was approved by the voters.
Can I take the first?
Ms. Henry is on the line.
Sure. Can I take the first question first?
Yeah.
Okay. So if you'll recall, the money that's left here in the High Point Central project, these are dollars that were put there to do the sprinkler system so that for the permitting, you know, if you were, I don't know if you were back on the board at that time, but we were doing some renovation at High Point Central. The City of High Point decided that we needed a sprinkler system there. So the dollars that are, that we're moving into High Point Central were placed there to do that work on the third floor of their High Point Central. We did also address some issues with some restrooms and the stairwell at High Point Central. But all of that work, that those dollars were moved there have been complete. So these weren't bond dollars that were originally placed at High Point Central back in, you know, the 2008 bond. These are dollars that were moved there. The largest part of these dollars are the red light camera dollars. They're not even bond dollars that are at High Point Central that we're moving out. It's, it's the red light camera money that we had and held for several years in anticipation of some kind of capital need. And those are the dollars that were moving out of High Point Central because again, the sprinkler project and the stairwell project has, have been complete.
Did we do all the work that needed to be done at High Point Central? Will there be additional work?
I'm trying to figure out how to avoid the feedback with the Zoom in the room and our mics. Did she hear Anita's question?
I didn't finish my question.
Okay.
The feedback was too late.
Okay. Anita's gonna, she didn't complete her question. So hold on just a minute. Go ahead, Anita.
Okay. Did we do all the work that needed to be done at High Point Central? Or in the $1.7 billion bond, is there additional work for Central?
So there is additional work for Central in the 1.7, in the 1.7 billion. I don't remember where Central falls, but there is, in the Facilities Master Plan, there is a renovation.
Ms. Funderburke, please tell her that, that we can't hear her. Ms. Henry, we don't hear you yet. Hold on. Hold on.
I understood what she said.
Yeah. Public heard.
You can continue, Ms. Henry.
Okay. Thank you. So there is, there is additional work to be done in the Facilities Master Plan at High Point Central. It's, it's a full renovation project there at High Point Central. But so again, the monies that, these dollars that we transferred to High Point Central to complete the sprinkler project and the stairwell project, those, that work has been done.
Okay, okay. Pull money now. And the source of the money is not a great concern to me. But we're going to pull $1.3 million now and then we're going to turn around, if the bond passes, and renovate the school. It makes no sense to me. Another question, we received $2 million for the sale of a property on Piscatawkey Road. Where's that money?
It's, it's in our capital outlay fund right now.
Why wasn't it? Why wasn't it used to fund these two items?
So those dollars, we are requesting that they be transferred to the STEM Center at the K-8 Southwest area. I'm sorry, can we?
Those, Angie?
Yeah.
If you, if we can't hear you, I can share that. We're proposing that those funds be used for the Science Center at the new, on the site of the new K-8 building, Southwest building. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
We are, when we looked at how much it will cost for each of those four science centers, well, first let me go back a little bit. When we were doing the planning, we were adding science spaces in each of the elementary buildings, which would have cost or caused us to increase the $2 billion to increase exponentially. So we decided, as you may recall, to create four STEM centers. As we looked across the country, our science staff and CTE staff actually visited STEM centers. To do STEM at elementary and middle school, you need sort of different spaces. Elementary spaces are different than middle. And you also need CTE spaces. So we needed to expand the building so that it has elementary science spaces, middle school science spaces, and CTE spaces. And so we are proposing that the board consider using that $2 million so that the Science Center is appropriate for elementary science, middle school science, and K-8 CTE.
And that addresses one of the four STEM centers. Is that correct?
Correct.
What about the other three?
They're in the new bond project.
I still haven't heard an explanation on why the newcomer school was relocated.
So the first recommendation was for Andrews was just to place a few classrooms in Andrews. But as we looked at the newcomers population, it's too large to just have that many students at Andrews. And you would need to renovate a sizable portion of Andrews. And as you know, there's a proposal to make Andrews, to renovate Andrews to be a public safety high school. So to invest that sort of money into Andrews when we know we would then have to move the newcomer students again is a waste of money and also unfair to move that population of students again when we have a building where they actually live, this population we're talking about actually live closer to that, to the Tomlinson Building.
They may, but there's not much difference between Andrews and distance, between Andrews and Central. How many classrooms will the newcomers facility have?
Do you know that number, Dr. Oakley? We know they'll need the entire building.
They will need the entire building. We'll have six classes on the second floor. It will have one CTE classroom. There will be three elementary classrooms and three middle classrooms. We'll also have media space as well as clinical space in the building.
And how many classrooms will the public safe, safety concentration in Andrews need?
Oh, we won't know that until we do the design. Yeah.
Yeah. Thanks.
All right. Is there? Is there a motion?
I think I moved.
Okay, that's right. We already did that for the discussion. All right, we're at voting. Linda?
No.
No.
Winston?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Anita?
No.
Pat?
No.
Diane? That passes by a vote of five to three. We are now at the universal face covering mask requirement monthly vote. Welcome, Dr. Van. Was looking for you. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board.
Good evening.
Yes. I will be brief tonight. I do have two items that I would like to mention to you tonight. Just a little bit of an update on where we are in Guilford County as far as metrics are concerned from the last time that we've spoken a month ago. A lot of things have changed with the metrics after the Christmas holidays and we are seeing the highest surge of cases in metrics since the beginning of the pandemic. The number of cases, we're seeing approximately 900 new cases every day. This is the highest number since the beginning of the pandemic. It started a week before Christmas and at this time, we're not seeing a plateau in those cases. We are not seeing a plateau in those cases just yet. So a lot of work that is being done in the Health Department to address all of the cases that were, that are being reported to the Health Department. Positivity rate, we are at 26% positivity rate as of two days ago. This is the highest 14 days average positivity rate that we've ever had, again, during the entire pandemic, with certain days, one day positivity rate as high as 32, 33%. We do not anticipate for this positivity rate to start going down in the next couple of weeks since we do have some of those days that are still really high overall. So that means that almost a quarter of all tests that are being performed right now are coming back positive. And again, this is the second metric that has the highest numbers in the last two years. As far as hospitalizations are concerned, we are receiving reports from our hospital systems and we have over 250 individuals in the hospitals right now with COVID-19 related illness. A good portion of these individuals are in the ICU. And as you have heard from the three CEOs of our healthcare systems two days ago, they have a lot of critical needs in the hospital systems right now with issues and concerns in the emergency room department, utilization and wait times, critical staffing issues, as well as a variety of challenges with all of the people that are in the hospitals right now. And then also, we are hearing from our other critical infrastructure partners in emergency services, law enforcement, fire. They're also handling critical infrastructure circumstances with the surge of COVID-19. So this is the, just very brief update when it comes to the, the numbers. HealthyGuilford.com is the best place for our data hub to stay up to date with all, all of the metrics that we're reporting on right now. And the second part that I wanted to mention to the board tonight is the information that we have received during the Christmas holidays around the changes in the quarantine and isolation protocols, especially for the, the schools, and how masking and vaccinations are playing a critical role in the way that we're addressing quarantine and isolation. Also in the new toolkit, it is very much highlighted, the information that we've received from the American Academy of Pediatrics around their recommendations for all students two years older and staff, and teachers in school should wear face masks and that the recommendations around universal masking in, in schools. So that information is included in the toolkit, the North Carolina DHHS Toolkit for School Districts. And just to mention two of these areas that we're focusing on right now that are really surrounded, surrounding vaccines and mask wearing. Students can return to school after five days if masks are worn during days six to 10 after a positive case. So if somebody is testing positive, they can return to school after five days of isolation if they're wearing the mask during those last five days. And then when it comes to exposures and somebody is exposed to somebody with COVID, masks also play a very important, critical role actually in being able to keep the students in school. So in districts where masks are required, there is no exclusion from school if there is an exposure in those classrooms. And also in school districts where masks are required, if there is an exposure briefly where the two, one or two of those individuals is unmasked, such as during lunchtime, for example, but the district has a mandatory mask mandate, again, those students will not be excluded. We're also talking about individuals that are up to date on their immunizations. Those are not going to be excluded. And also individuals that have tested positive for COVID in the last nine. And also, individuals that have tested positive for COVID in the last 90 days, they've recovered, and now they're coming back into the schools. No exclusion is needed in that circumstance as well. So I just wanted to update you on the new guidance and recommendations that are implemented, that we're implementing right now for isolation and quarantine in the case of exposures or positive cases, and how masks are playing a critical role of keeping those students in the school. And that is my update for the board tonight.
Thank you. Anita?
I don't know who can address this question, but we have students, special need students who cannot be vaccinated per their doctors and cannot wear masks. If they are, if someone in their classroom gets COVID and they're exposed, they're out of school for 10 days.
That is correct. This particular recommendation does not apply in those circumstances where masks cannot be used.
What can we do for these kids? They can't mask, they can't get vaccinated, so they're paying double the price of kids who can do those things, and they can't help it. And they are special need students. Their need to be in school is as great as any I know. So what do we do?
Yeah, and that particular circumstance I know is really difficult, but all of the mitigation strategies that we would normally put in place in order to overlay them for protection of the others cannot be put in place, so we have to go with the standard recommendations.
We have to, or we are?
We are.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have one question that came up in the superintendent's meeting. My understanding is, in order to implement the shorter number of days for quarantine, you must have the masking in place. You can't have a mask optional policy, or it doesn't work.
That is correct. So it has to be, like I've mentioned at the beginning, it has, these are particular recommendations for school districts that have a mandatory mask in place.
Otherwise, we have to go back to the old 10-day.
Yes, that is correct. So we're implementing them right now because Guilford County is still under a mandatory mask mandate, so we're able to apply these new recommendations.
Madam Superintendent, these students that gateway, they, per their IEP, it's occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, all the therapies, and they aren't getting them. Where does that put us? And where does that put the child when it comes to their IEPs?
I'm unaware of those students not getting their therapy, so I would...
They can't go to school, so they can't get the therapies. We won't let them go to school for 10 days, so, and then if child number two, they can be out over and over and over again, and they're not getting the services that their IEP says they should have.
I would have to ask our legal counsel, but I don't see that as different if they were out being sick with the flu.
We provide compensatory education if there's a reason to do that, and if, you know, students do sometimes miss school, so I can't, I don't know of an example of a time when there's something that we have done that denied students services that we have not compensated. I'm not aware of any time.
If we won't let them come to school, they don't get the services.
Well, we don't not let them come to school, we follow the guidance.
I think we do. It's not required, I just asked that question. It's recommended, it's not required.
We follow the directives of the Health Department, and if they're, I'm not aware of any experience that a student has had that they are denied services without having compensatory services, that accompanies that.
That wouldn't be different than a student who had, that we wouldn't allow to come to school for a vaccination, or ringworms, or lice. I mean, we have to send students home for medical conditions.
Yes, that is absolutely correct. And I don't know for, whatever matters in this conversation, I have a child with special needs that receives services in the schools, and he couldn't go to school for a week when he was in quarantine, and we worked with the school leadership to be able to provide those services to him when he came back to school to keep up with his IEP. So I'm very familiar with children with special needs.
Anita, by and large, IEPs don't dictate it'll be Tuesday, they say you will get X services. So it's not so prescriptive as to say he missed school on Tuesday, so he doesn't get it.
But if he misses 10 days of school, he goes 10 days, he she goes 10 days without any services?
Well, no, I think there's all kinds of things being done. I think our people have been very, well, maybe you have an example of a time, and they should contact the school, but I'm sure they're, if they qualify, they'll get compensatory aid.
Well, they have been qualifying, so I don't know why they would be different.
Thank you. Linda, then Kim?
On the special needs. Okay. There is a huge difference in the fact that a child that gets OT, PT, and speech, going without that service makes his progress decline. Okay? That's just, that's real life, because if they don't get the service in a timely manner, if you wait two weeks, also, this parent is very concerned about the rolling, the chance of this thing spiraling. Her child cannot get, because I was on the phone with this parent just before the meeting, and that was the reason I was late.
Let's not discuss.
Well, I'm just saying, but I mean, what I don't like, you know, what we need to say is we're going to look at it. I mean, because it is a difference when you've got special needs children and you have healthy children, okay? This child is not capable of doing, you know, you can't do OT and PT remotely. And so, and this parent is very concerned, and I don't think we're providing a, I'm sure this parent's watching. You know, what we should be saying, please let us know, we will work with this parent to make sure whatever needs to be done is done.
Let's be aware of why that child is sent home. It's because they've been exposed, and so are you going to send your employee in there? I mean, there's all kinds of layers of concern. We're in a pandemic, we're trying to protect our employees, we're trying to protect our students, we're trying to protect other students from getting exposed. It is a difficult situation. But a child who has services in their IEP gets the services in their IEP?
Okay. Well, I will be glad to provide the information on that student. This parent's very concerned. I think special needs children need to be at least discussed in how we provide those services, because the way this thing is set up, it can, they can get in a hamster wheel. Okay? So I'm very concerned. It doesn't have to be if a child is exposed, does not mean that child has the COVID. So the child that has now put them out does not necessarily have COVID. They've been exposed. Now they have to wait until that child gets a positive PCR test before they can come back. I believe that's the case, correct? If you're, if a child in your class has been exposed, not necessarily has COVID, what happens?
It depends on what the masking processes are in that classroom, so the mask...
Well, these children would not be masked because all of them are severely disabled. And as far as I know, none of them are masked due to their medical situations.
Yeah, so they would have to be tested at five days from their exposure.
All right, so that sits those kids out for five days. Then some other kid gets exposed, sits them out for, and actually, this particular child is not vaccinated. So then you got a major, now it's 10 days, something can happen in the 10 days, and it just rolls. So I'm just saying, we need, the special needs children need to be discussed, at least, as to how we support these children, because it is detrimental for them.
Well, so would COVID be, and all those children are also, when they're exposed, need to be protected from COVID. So we have lots of things to consider in how to deal with the pandemic related to children who are fragile.
And that's fine, but then we need to provide services at home.
We do provide speech services at home through virtual, virtual therapy. Some of the others, we do not, we cannot just send staff into the homes.
But when the exposure is at school?
Okay. Well, it's a challenge. And then going on with the mask stuff, again, there was a study out of Australia, there's been a study out of England, and all these studies are saying that the mask does not necessarily, and even the gentleman that spoke said that Bonham County has been masked 100%, and they have tremendous more than we do. So I just don't see the evidence that masks are preventing, and I do believe they do more harm for children, so.
Thank you. Kim, followed by Betty?
Yes, I noticed that we do have like a lot of discussion, and everyone has their data, you know, about masks, but sometimes you hear someone say a cloth mask, and then we say the medical mask. So can you like give me a parallel, maybe, of what type of mask is best to prevent the spread of anything coming from my face?
Yeah, sure. So right now, we have three categories of masks that we can talk about. The first one is the cloth mask that we know has the least level of protection, especially when it's not made out of the correct material and is not, is not a tight material that has really tight knit, and it doesn't have the number of layers that are appropriate. Then we move into the more medical slash surgical masks that used appropriately over the mouth and nose, the nose and mouth, and they're as well fitting around the face as possible, are working very well. And then we move into the N95 grade masks, which are the ones that work the best in all circumstances. So right now, because we know that Omicron is so much more transmissible than all of the other variants, and there is in the school district availability for the surgical masks, we definitely recommend for everybody to use those masks that are being provided.
But the type of mask does not determine the strategy of how long someone, like with the recommendation, they just say masking.
Yes.
So do you think that the best recommendation for us is a type of mask in order to comply with the five days? Because I could see if someone is not wearing the mask that provides the most protection, still being out quarantined a longer time as well.
Yeah, so the guidance doesn't necessarily specify that you need to wear a particular mask. However, my belief is that when we're talking about surgical masks in the environment that we're in right now are the best choice that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betty.
Yeah, I want to speak a little bit about the IEP with students. As far as the students wearing masks, of course, that is due to their physical element, but as far as them receiving services, they can still receive some of their services virtual. Like, I have a grandson, so he receives his speech, you know, virtual.
Speech.
Yeah, speech. But they also have a sheet, I call it cheat sheet, that they also can use for OT or PT with their parents. It's very limited, but they can receive the other services when they go back to school, and it's a matter of how many hours they have in the IEP for that particular quarter or that particular month. So they can, they can pay catch-up. What I'm saying is, they are not going to lose their service, they'll still get their service, but they will get it later when they, when he or she returns back to school.
Thank you, Anita.
One of the speakers, Jim Morris, quoted a study, I think he said, where Dr. Fauci said that masks do not reduce COVID-19. Do you know what he was talking about?
No, I was not here.
And I don't remember exactly where, it was on, I think he said it was on the CDC site, but I can't, unless we can do a replay, I can't. I didn't write that down.
He said face the nation.
Is that what he said?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thought he said CDC website, too. Thank you. All right, thank you, Dr. Van. We are now, you have to vote, yeah, ready to vote on this. Is there a motion?
Motion to continue with the mask.
I second.
All right, Anita?
No.
Betty?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Winston?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Do you have Pat or Diane's vote?
Pat, do we have your vote?
Or what, did he? Pat votes no. Diane vote?
No.
Yeah, that was Pat. All right, that passed.
Madam Chair, I have tried to vote for each item.
Okay, yeah, I think we've gotten your votes. He shared your votes on the other items, so thank you, and we have yours on this. And my vote is yes, and that passes by a vote of five to three. And we will vote on it again on this next month. We are now at reports from the chair, and I will be as brief as I can. Good evening and Happy New Year. I was honored to participate in an important conversation about safety with our law enforcement partners and our school leaders, including Dr. Contreras. Safety Matters: A Pledge to Protect was an opportunity to delve deeper into the issues that face our schools and the steps the community can take to protect our children. You can watch the discussion on WFMY's website. Andrews High, Dudley High, and Grimsley High will continue to host COVID-19 testing clinics this week for our staff and students only. The free testing is available from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m., and from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. through Friday, January 14. Our learning hubs are gaining national recognition. Please visit our website and click on the appropriate photo to read a story from NPR about how the learning hubs are helping high school students get caught up from pandemic-related learning loss. I'm pleased to announce that we are now offering an attendance bonus for substitute teachers. Substitutes who work every available school day in a given month will be eligible for $1,000 bonus each month. Please visit our website to apply to become a substitute teacher. We have also increased our attendance bonus for bus drivers. Drivers who work every school day each month will receive a bonus of $1,000 for that month. We greatly appreciate our drivers and thank them for their service. Guilford County Schools is actively seeking tutors to help students in all grade levels with their academic recovery. High school students, college students, and retired educators have an opportunity to help students get back on track and earn some extra cash. Go to www.gcsnc.com and click on Tutor Job ID 7926 to apply. And finally, in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday, which we will celebrate Monday, I will share this quote. "If you can't fly, then run; if you can't run, then walk; if you can't walk, then crawl; but whatever you do, you have to keep moving forward." As we approach nearly two full years into this pandemic, we will continue to do whatever we can to keep moving forward. This concludes my remarks. I will turn to Dr. Contreras for our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Good evening and Happy New Year. I want to start by expressing my gratitude to Commissioner Skip Alston of the Board of County Commissioners and the cities of Greensboro and High Point for this swift response in helping our high school students access public transit. We know that this pandemic has not been easy on any of us, especially our families, and the school bus crisis is just one more difficulty that you have had to deal with. We are so appreciative of your patience and flexibility as we navigate this emergency situation together. To the parents, neighbors, and community members who are transporting students, we thank you. And we hope to have our bus drivers back to full health and driving buses again very soon. But it is important to explain the school bus crisis in its full context. Guilford County School routes 39,000 students, and our buses travel 41,000 miles daily. We have 486 bus driver positions, but like every other district in the country, we have vacancies. And I always ask people to do a quick Google search. I ask the principals to just put... I ask the principals to just put into the Google, to do a Google search, "school bus driver shortage," and tell me how many hits they get. And you can get up to 13 million hits. That's how many articles and stories there are about the national crisis. So I know sometimes we tend to not pay attention to what's happening at the national level and the state level, but this has been a crisis for a long time, especially since, as I saw one of the pastors say, when you think about someone driving a 15-ton vehicle with 70 students in it for less than $15 an hour, when you can work at Walmart and make $15 an hour just look, just standing, manning a kiosk, and also have get tuition reimbursement. For those who send to the board the emails, why don't you just pay them more? I want to remind you that the Board of Education does not set the salary scale. Salary scales in North Carolina are set by the state of North Carolina, not the Board of Education. There's plenty you can blame them for and me for, but not this one. If we pay more than the state for bus drivers, if we're able to change the salary scale, it's because we receive additional funding from the Board of County Commissioners. This past year, under Commissioner Skip Alston, this Board of County Commissioners did increase pay for the bus drivers, but we still started the, started the year with 60 bus driver vacancies. We have 52 bus drivers on leave of absence. And yesterday, I believe, we had another 57 who called in sick with COVID. So on any given day, we already have about 115 bus drivers out just because of vacancies and those on leave of absence, leaving us with many routes uncovered. This is not something new. This has been going on for many, many years. In Guilford County, in Durham, in Wake, anywhere in the country, the superintendents and boards of education are pulling their hair out, trying to figure out how do we get children to school? And it's at a crisis level now because of the pandemic and the issue that these bus drivers have a skill and a license that is highly desirable, this commercial driver's license that truck drivers have, while there's a supply chain issue and delays. And corporations can pay them $35 and $40 an hour to become a truck driver. So for those who think it's as simple as simply growing them here, they can make more than $15 an hour, and no high school program is going to change that. No discipline program will change that. Paying them $2 more an hour isn't going to change that. We are in a situation where we need to fundamentally rethink how we transport students to school. For those who say, wow, why didn't we get a call earlier? Because people call in when they call in. They called in on Thursday night between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. when they got the results back of their COVID tests, just like we call in the night before and the morning of. And that's when we take action immediately. We did everything we could not to close schools because we know how difficult it is to find childcare. So we delayed the start of school for middle school and high school so that we could keep school open. We can't do that every day because in North Carolina, you must have schools open for X number of hours every school year. So we are not allowed to just cut two hours off of the school day every day. It's not permissible. For those who are angry and saying, superintendent, why don't you just close schools? The superintendent is not legally allowed to open and close schools. I have no legal authority to do so. Only the Board of Education can do so. And in this case, the Board of Education cannot because we are only allowed by state law now to transfer five days into remote days. So for those who are saying, just go to remote education, the state law has changed where we can only go to five days of remote education. And you may recall that you asked us for two days during the Thanksgiving break, and we did that. So we have three days left. So all of the ideas you were throwing at us, we have thought about them. There are a lot of smart people thinking about these things. If you look at what happened in other districts across the state, they got an email that said, we're so sorry you won't have any transportation. Please do your best to get to school. We tried to come up with a solution. And that solution was to try to work with public transit and to use our transportation funds flexibly. The cities are not paying for this. The district is. The district is using their funds to pay for the public transportation. And for those who say they're such bad people on public transportation, I caution us to remember those are our neighbors, our parents, who are getting to work who may not have the money for a car. And yes, I'm sure there are some people who are not, you know, of high character on a bus. They're also in the malls, at football games, they're in churches, they're everywhere. But to say that our neighbors, our parents, people trying to get to work every day are horrible people, and somehow those who ride the buses because they don't have cars are overrepresented of sexual offenders and deviants in society is unfair because they're overwhelmingly poor, overwhelmingly of color. And if there aren't enough stops, then it's time for us to push on our municipalities to expand the transportation system so that it is more robust. But oftentimes, we don't think about that until it knocks at our door. But the people who, there have been people in our community who have been telling us for a long time that the transportation system is inadequate and that they need more stops. And we have turned a deaf ear to them because it wasn't an issue for us. But now it's an issue for everybody. I also want us to understand that the yellow bus system that we have has many shortcomings for our students. We have one of the lowest participation rates in the state of dual enrollment for our high school students. That means while other districts, in other districts, the high school students are gaining college credits because they can get to a community college and take college classes and graduate with an associate's degree, our students don't participate because our yellow buses can't get them there. Our students can't stay after school because we don't have yellow buses to get them home. So they can't get tutoring. Many can't participate in band and chorus or zero period for an advanced placement course. They can't participate in so many advanced programs or other kinds of extracurricular programs because the yellow bus system can't get them home to and from school or back home. So to utilize these services, the, of public transit, may be a silver lining. And I want to thank our legal counsel who worked hard with the cities and the legal counsel from both cities to come up with a great rate to allow our students, particularly in High Point, for $1.50 a day to get back and forth to school and free service in the evenings so that they can get to work, to internships, apprenticeships, to get to GTCC if they need to take a course, and free ridership on the weekends if they want to attend sports. And as I said, to get to work. This is something they have not had before, but they will be able to swipe their one cards once we put the equipment on those buses, and we're still working with Greensboro. And I thank them because this is forcing us to be more innovative and providing our students with more options and more equity in our schools for students who just don't have parents with the free time to take them back and forth to all of these events or without access to all of this programming. It is not an ideal situation, but we have a national crisis. Not a local crisis, not a GCS crisis, not something that happened overnight. But this has been years in the making, and the pandemic made it worse. So I am sorry that we cannot resolve this, but as a community, we're going to make the best of it, and we're going to do everything we can to get our students to school. I'd like to move on to say congratulations to Principal Katrinka Brown of Jackson Middle School, who was announced Friday as the Piedmont Triad Region Principal of the Year for the state of North Carolina. This makes her one of nine finalists for the title of North Carolina Principal of the Year. And we are excited to have both our teacher and principal of the year advancing in these competitions. We also want to recognize Min McNicholas, our Rookie Teacher of the Year, who is one of 27 finalists for the state's beginning Teacher of the Year title. Min is a science teacher at Northwest Middle, and we are proud that Min Katrinka and Teacher of the Year Leah Carper, who represent the very best of excellent educators for Guilford County. This Friday, January 14, marks the opening of the 2022-2023 Magnet Application Window, which will run through Monday, February 21. Applications will be accepted online through gcsnc-schoolmint.net. January is School Board Appreciation Month, and I want to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to each and every one of our school board members. This is a difficult job in the best of times, and certainly that much harder during a global pandemic. But I appreciate the thoughtfulness and dedication you bring to your roles. As a token of our appreciation, we have a gift of artwork from schools in each of your regions. And you can take those out and share the artwork that the students made for you. Thank you to our students for designing and creating this artwork for our board members. Finally, I'd like to conclude by sharing my deepest condolences for the family and loved ones of former Chief Financial Officer Sharon Osment and former principal and advocate for exceptional children, Dale Metz. Both of these individuals lived their lives in service to the students and staff of Guilford County Schools, and they made a tremendous impact on those who were privileged to know and work with them. Their losses will be felt by many for years to come. We are grateful to have known them for the time that we did and humbled by the legacy they live in Guilford County, they leave in Guilford County Schools. This concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Contreras. I'm admiring my gifts over here and thinking about where they're going. These are wonderful.
I'm sorry, we do have an update on testing, the COVID testing we've done in the schools that Dr. Oakley will do. I'm very sorry.
Thank you. Dr. Oakley?
We're just going to pull up a quick PowerPoint, and I'll be quick.
And following Dr. Oakley, Ms. Henry will present the annual comprehensive financial report.
Good evening. I'm going to give a brief overview of where we are with COVID testing and then look ahead at where, what we're planning as we move forward.
Madam Chair, while they're getting that ready, I had a text message from Pat Tillman. May I read it?
Yes.
He said, "I've been pinging the Zoom to make a comment." The study referenced Dr. Scott Gottlieb. Okay, he was on Face the Nation and stated cloth masks are not effective other than for droplets like sneezing, et cetera. Anyway.
Thank you. I'm sorry, our technology is not what it, what we'd like it to be. Yeah, thank you.
My, my connection keeps slipping in and out, so I think it's, there's something going on.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, so just a brief update on COVID testing, including current testing available for staff and students, and update on athletic testing, our partnership with Public Health Moving Forward, and optional self-administered tests. The objective remains to increase access to COVID testing to ensure that we're able to reduce the spread of virus while maintaining our commitment to keeping schools open in person. COVID testing sites that have been open since January 3 have been in partnership with One Love Services at Grimsley, Andrews, and Dudley. Testing is scheduled to last at least through Friday, January 14. We will open these sites up to the public starting January 13 as, with a separate lane for GCS staff and students so that they're still able to access testing without a long wait. As of yesterday, more than 5,500 GCS staff and students had taken advantage of these testing sites. Again, we will expand these to the community on Thursday with a separate lane that continues to be reserved for our own staff and students. Athletic testing, when we think about our athletes, they continue to make up the highest percentage of positive cases that are actually in school. We have had, like everything else, in partnership with vendors, their supply chain demand, the access to rapid tests and PCR tests changes week to week, and some staffing shortages navigates who we're able to partner with for athletic testing. At this point, our testing is scheduled to begin at a subset of schools, January 21, phasing in additional schools over the subsequent weeks, and would include the rapid antigen and PCR tests. Testing also includes unvaccinated coaches, sponsors, athletes, and other students in high-risk activities such as marching band and Jero T.C. Once the testing calendar is finalized, these will be posted and shared with families so that everyone knows what is happening and when. The partnership with Public Health, Public Health has recently hired 15 COVID-19 coordinators that will be initially placed in our comprehensive high schools. They've budgeted to hire up to 50. The focus of these is to test symptomatic individuals and individuals who have been exposed, of course, with consent and parent permission. The addition of no symptom or asymptomatic screenings are part of a comprehensive health and safety strategy for districts to remain open for in-person learning. These screenings go on top of already strong health and safety measures that we already have in place, including masking, hand washing, and access to symptomatic testing. and access to symptomatic testing for staff and students, which is what's happening at our existing clinics. GCS is working to plan a testing program for participating staff and high school students with parent permission who opt in for a self-administered mouth swab COVID-19 PCR test. GCS staff and high school students to start with, with parent permission, can opt into the test, which would be administered at central office sites and schools, high school students specifically. Results are then mailed overnight to the contracted laboratory and sent directly to the individual and/or parent and to the Guilford County Public Health. GCS is providing access to the test for participating staff and high school students with parent permission. When we look at the different prongs of the COVID-19 testing plan, they cover what's available to all, what's available to athletes, what's available to our comprehensive high school, and what we're looking to make available to staff at all GCS sites. That concludes the update on testing, and we're happy to take any questions you have.
Winston, then, Kim.
Thank you for all of that and everything everybody's doing. I heard from some folks that there were significant delays in getting results, specifically at the Grimsley site. And I'm sure that's going to happen. So can you speak to that and how?
I can speak to what they've told us. So initially, for folks that tested early, when the sites first opened, it was a 48-hour turnaround. I know many people who tested Monday had results Wednesday. As testing increased across the county, Four Seasons is now at a five-to-six-day turnaround. Our testing sites are at a 72-hour to up to a 96-hour turnaround. It really depends on the time at which the lab receives results. People with negative results get a text message. People with positive results get a phone call and a text message. So sometimes that part takes a little bit longer.
I also had individuals themselves. Their labs were reduced by the number of individuals they had that were out with COVID themselves. So everyone is being impacted, even the labs that are doing the test results for us. I did call and ask.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, can you remind me of the reason why, like, students that are not vaccinated have to be tested or are out longer than students that are vaccinated?
Well, that's the Public Health guidance. The athletic testing was approved by the board a few months ago.
No, I know what we approved, but I was just wondering.
But unvaccinated students follow different protocols for isolation and quarantine than vaccinated students. Per Public Health guidance. That's not a Guilford County Schools rule. That's a Public Health rule.
Right, that's a Public Health rule. And are we aware of testing, you know, that can happen, like, immediately when someone is able to get those results? What test is that?
That's the rapid antigen test. The availability of those is declining across everywhere. So really, the availability is week to week. It's part of the supply chain that we've dealt with with lots of other things in the past two years.
And finally, at the testing sites, can students or walk up to get tested? Or do you need to be in a car?
We have an option and a plan in place for each site to walk up. We're encouraging the car just because it limits exposure, and it's cold, but we will not turn anyone who walks up away.
And, okay, I have one more question. Are we asking people to get tested? Or are people saying, "I think I have COVID, so I want to get tested"? Like, is there some other mandate for employees? Like, what?
There's no mandate. There's no mandate from Guilford County Schools. Public Health is encouraging anyone who is symptomatic or has been exposed to get tested so we have better data to reduce the spread.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking that, Mrs. Harvey. Someone got up this evening and said we were forcing employees and students to be tested, and that is false information.
Thank you. Linda?
Which is only a PRC test being considered for negative? I mean, what are we accepting as a negative test in Guilford County Schools?
So Guilford County Schools doesn't determine positive or negative. That comes directly through Public Health. In most cases, like with the Four Seasons site, it's a rapid antigen and a PCR test. At the three sites at Grimsley, Andrews, and Dudley, it's only that PCR test.
All right, but we're providing testing. All right, and which ones are we providing?
We're providing access to testing, and we're providing access to PCR testing at Grimsley, Dudley, and Andrews.
So there's rapid testing, and then there's PCR testing, correct? That's what I'm hearing.
At those three sites, there's PCR testing.
Okay, only PCR?
Only PCR testing.
Okay.
But we have asked for rapid testing, but none of the school districts, or very few school districts across the country can get them right now.
Okay. So then my second question, when it comes to the stipulations of when someone has to be quarantined, what test is required to be negative so that you don't have to quarantine? Is it only a PCR?
That's dependent on the case and on the Public Health guidance. To my knowledge, they are taking both. In most cases, they're giving both, when they can, a rapid and a PCR test. But I don't have any knowledge that only one is accepted to be counted as a negative.
Okay, well, I would say we need some clarification for the public as to what test... All right, because I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing if you're positive, if you're positive, they'll take a rapid test or a PCR. But if you're negative, they will not take a rapid test. I don't know. I don't have a clue which way it is. So I guess for the public, I'm asking that we clarify that. Then also, I'm questioning the... I heard you're going to put 15... Or DHHS is going to put 15 coordinators? Or what were we calling?
Guilford County Public Health is hiring COVID coordinators.
To only test? Whether or provide test or repeat to me what they're doing?
They're allowed to assist Public Health with the contact tracing that may occur within a school, and they are able to test symptomatic or exposed students. When athletic testing begins, they can also be a part of that testing plan.
Okay, I didn't hear contact tracing the first time.
That's included.
Okay, I just wanted... That was what I was looking for because I didn't hear it in the first explanation because with all this COVID testing and people being exposed, administrators, if they are having to deal with all that, they're not going to be able to manage their schools. Or we're going to eat up too much manpower with them trying to keep track of all that. So I was one of the ones that asked for these coordinators, so I'm just hoping that that's going to upload our administrators to some level. But I'm glad I heard that was what I was looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions unless Pat or Diane has a question? I'll give them a minute.
Pat has a question.
Okay.
Is my audio, can you hear?
Uh-huh. Hi, Pat.
So in terms of a classroom or a school, is there a number or a cap where we may have to shut things down? Or is there any sort... Or do we just continue on? Whether there's two students in that class that may only be left because of COVID and contact tracing, testing, et cetera? Or is there any... What's our policy or procedures with regard to continuing education in person if we may have a massive outbreak, per se?
Great question, Mr. Tillman. We specifically haven't set metrics for that. We can tell you, when you get close to about 30% of your teaching and support staff out, it becomes very difficult to cover and operate the building safely. But different schools have different amount of staff, and so that's why we haven't said, you know, it's 25% or 30% because you could be in a school that has, you know, a large number of support staff. Or you could be in a school with a large number of support staff, but they are EC support, and we don't pool those support staff to provide classroom coverage. So we do not close school because there are too many students out. We are going to make decisions based on when there are too many staff members out to run the school safely. We're also now thinking about how to use the Swivel technology again when there are so many students out that we need to make sure that we are providing classroom instruction so that the student at home can participate. And also thinking about the lessons that we pre-recorded at the beginning of the pandemic for some of the largest course offerings. So for example, Math 1, Math 2, Math 3, Earth and Environmental Science, Biology 1, our ELA classes, grades K through 5, Math K through 5, those sort of classes so that our students can participate from home should we have large numbers of students who are quarantined or isolated. So we'll be working on that in the upcoming weeks. But we've just been inundated with one situation after the next, just trying to deal with transportation and getting students to school, trying to deal with getting testing protocols up to keep the virus as much as possible out of school. So that was a priority as well. But now we're going to start looking at the Swivel and pre-recorded lessons so that we can deal with the issue of students who can't make it to the classroom.
Thank you. And I'm glad you mentioned the video content that we spent a pretty good amount of money on. I think it was certainly worth it at the time, given where we were. So all that content is somewhere that can be deployed or used when it becomes necessary? Is that right?
Well, I think it's important to remember that that was for August. And so, you know, we did that for the first quarter of the year as we were prepared for gradual reentry. Now we're in the winter, and we're at a different place with pacing. So it might be something that we would have to rebid and reengage in to make sure. We didn't do the whole year recorded, right? Because we began bringing students back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Dr. Oakley. I don't see any other questions?
She does not.
Okay.
That's what I just asked.
Yeah, it's up to you. All right, so we'll take a 10-minute recess and return in 10 minutes.
Available, we'll give her a minute to get connected.
I'm here.
Great. Dr. Contreras, this is that time, Angie, our annual comprehensive financial report. And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Again, this is our chance to bring to you our annual comprehensive financial report. That's a new order of the words you're used to seeing a comprehensive annual financial report, but now that's changed. This is the one for June 30th, 2021. And we do have representatives from our audit firm here to help us present this evening. Before I do that, though, I would like to once again thank the Board of Education and for their continued support of the finance operations of the district and of course to Superintendent Contreras, who sets the expectation very high for our performance in the financial arena, always wanting us to be ensuring that we do things correctly and appropriately so that we can continue to receive the clean audits that you're going to hear about this evening. This evening, we do have with us from Dixon News Goodman, April Bell, and Paige Alfred. They have a PowerPoint that they're going to share with you as they present the June 30th, 2021 annual comprehensive financial report. So with that, I'll turn it over to April and Paige. And I saw your PowerPoint up a moment ago, so hopefully we'll be able to get it back up fairly quickly. Oh, there it is. I see it. Thanks.
Thank you, Angie. I am not able to see the PowerPoint on my screen. Paige, can you see the PowerPoint on your screen?
I don't think they're sharing one yet.
Only because I'm presenting mine, I can.
Okay. I wonder if somebody might be able to change the technology so that I can see it.
We're working on it. Can you hold just one second?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, if you can try now.
Paige, are you sharing?
Yes, I'm trying to reshare again now.
Okay, okay.
And it says it's sharing on my side. Yep.
Okay. And I still can't see it on my side.
Let me try something, April, and see if it works.
Okay.
No, I can't do what I was going to do. I was going to try to share it on our internal platform.
Okay.
I hear them back there working on it, so.
Okay. I see it. Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, well, thank you. We want to start by thanking the Board of Education for the opportunity to share with you the results of your financial statement audit as well as the single audit for the year ending June 30, 2021. It's a pleasure to be with you here this evening. Wish that we could be there with you in person, but do appreciate the opportunity to share this presentation with you via Zoom. So we'll just start by thanking Angie and her entire team. For those of you who have been on the board in the past and have gone through the presentations with us, you are well aware that our financial statement audit, as well as our single audit, touches many, many people within the school system of Guilford County schools. And so the report that we're going to share with you this evening is a reflection on both the Finance Department for the school system, but then also the entire school system. We touch many different departments, many different individual schools, and so we're happy to share those results with you today, this evening. So Paige, if you'll go to the next slide, I'll just quickly go through the agenda that we're going to, the information that we're going to share. We're going to start by discussing the results from the audit. Then we will move into the communication, or review of the communication to the board, which is the smallest document that you received in your deliverables. We're going to go through some financial highlights. And so instead of taking time to go through all the details in the financial statements this evening, we're just going to go through some of the financial highlights and show you some comparative information so you'll have benchmarking data to compare the results for the year ending June 30, 2021, too. And then finally, we're going to conclude by sharing results from the compliance audit. So Paige, why don't you get us started by sharing the results of the audit?
Okay. Can everyone hear me okay? Yes? So to begin, we want to say that all the hard work that the Finance Team and everyone involved that's into this engagement is to contribute to the audit is to primarily enable us to issue an opinion on the financial statements. On this slide that should be showing up shortly, if it's not already there, we have a summary of our audit opinion, which is considered to be an unmodified opinion. With this opinion, we're noting that all of the funds of the school board were audited. Later in the presentation, we will also reference the compliance audit found in the single audit section, in which we're reporting on internal controls related to financial reporting. This unmodified report is the, unmodified opinion is the opinion that you want to receive, and it gives the financial statement users an indication that the information is materially accurate in the financial statements. Our entire auditor's report can be found on page one of the annual report. Moving on, we have the review of the communications to the board. There are various aspects of the audit process which we are required to communicate to the board, which are included in the reports to the board or communications letter, which should have been provided to the board members. The report will list off any significant estimates or sensitive disclosures. We've identified these as being the useful lives of depreciable assets, as well as the proportionate share of the net pension liability and OPEB liabilities for their retirement plans. Next, we would list any difficulties or disagreements with management which we may have had during the audit process, which would be communicated in the report. Thankfully, we have no difficulties or disagreements to report. As mentioned previously by April, we do appreciate all the hard work that the Finance Team puts into the audit. They work very hard to help us make this a successful engagement, and we have no issues to report. We report any uncorrected misstatements that would have been encountered throughout the audit procedures. We would communicate any misstatements that management may have elected not to make. We did have routine adjustments, which were proposed by us and reported by management. However, there were no uncorrected misstatements noted during the audit period. Lastly, we provide you with representations that were made to us by management. The communications report includes the management representation letter that is signed by management and shows the representations that were given to us throughout the audit period. We'll next move on to the financial highlights section, and we'll pass it back over to April.
Thanks, Paige. So we're going to, I'm going to share with you now some financial highlights. And if you looked in the financial statements, the big bound document that you received, you would notice that all of the funds that are within Guilford County schools are covered, both in our audit and in the financial information that's presented in the financial statement. So what I've done here is just pulled out some highlights of that financial information. And you'll notice in the financial statements, you just have one year of financial information. In these charts and graphs that we've prepared for you this evening, we're showing three years' worth of financial information because we think it's helpful for you to have some benchmarking information to show for comparative purposes. And so this first chart that we have here is showing the revenues, the sources of your revenues for the last three years. And we've got it broken down for the general and special revenue funds, the state public school fund, and then the federal fund. And you'll remember and understand from the budget that the state public school fund and the federal fund, in both of those funds, your revenues and your expenditures agree because your revenues represent the monies that you have actually spent today for the fiscal year. And so you'll notice here that you did have an increase in both the state public school fund and the federal fund. And in fact, that increase in the state public school fund and the federal fund, both of those increases relate to monies that were received related to COVID funding. The increase in the state public school fund graph includes a $10.8 million grant that was received for COVID-19 called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. This is federal money that you received that passed through the state public school fund. The gray bar, you'll see that that, you had a significant increase in that gray bar, which is your federal funding. And that increase includes a $22 million COVID-19 grant that you received from the federal government, and that grant is called education stabilization. So again, this money, while we're showing revenues here, what you have to remember for the state public school fund and for the federal fund, that represents, those revenues actually represent the monies that you received from the state public school fund and the federal fund that you actually spent during the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. All right, Paige, we go to the next chart. This next chart that we have shows how you actually spent the money. And so for the state of North Carolina, all school systems or LEAs have a state mandated chart of accounts that they follow to account for their transactions. In that state public school fund, or in that, in that chart of accounts that the LEH uses, the 5,000 COVID expenditures are for what we call instructional expenditures, and everything else that's in 6,000 and beyond is what we call other expenditures. And so we group those on this chart here so that you can see how much of your expenditures related to instructional expenditures versus other type expenditures. And you can see here that you did have an increase in your fiscal year 21 expenditures for instructional type expenditures. And that increase really was related to those COVID funds that you received and spent from federal and state government that were used primarily for instructional type expenditures. All right. This next chart represents the fund balance, and this is the fund balance that's in your general and your special revenue fund. You'll remember that your state fund and your federal fund doesn't have fund balance. And in fact, special revenue fund doesn't have a fund balance either, but it could have a fund balance. And so here you can see that you did have a decrease in your total fund balance. Again, that's related to your general fund, but you had a fairly consistent amount that's in unassigned for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021, or I should say, June 30, 2021. And so you did have a decrease in your fund balance, but what you have to realize and note is that you'd actually budgeted for a decrease of $18.5 million in your fund balance for fiscal year 20 to 21. That's what the Board of Education budgeted to decrease fund balance by. You actually did not have to decrease your fund balance that much. Fund balance only decreased by about $4 million. And so the difference between the fund balance decrease of $4 million and the amount that was budgeted for fund balance appropriation of $18.5 million relates to savings that were realized in fiscal year 21. All right, Paige? This next chart is your fund balance as a percentage of your expenditures. That's something that we look at, and really what we're looking for in your fund balance is percentage of expenditures. It's relatively consistent percentages. You can see, again, from 19 to 20, you had an increase in your fund balance. In 21, your fund balance decreased back down to an amount that was comparable to fiscal, to your June 30, 2019 fund balance levels. And again, that decrease is not alarming or surprising because in fact, you did decrease for an even more significant decrease in fund balance in fiscal year 21. All right. And the last chart that we're going to share related to financial results relates to your School Food Service Fund. And so this is the fund that had what we would consider, you know, the most significant impact in operations. And you can see here, if you look about halfway down the chart, you can see that your food sales almost dropped off completely. You had almost no food sales for fiscal year 21, and that's, you really had a decrease in participation in fiscal year 21 as well. And so while you did continue to provide services, there was just a decrease in participation. You were able to hold your federal revenues fairly level from fiscal year 20 to 21, and you also had a decrease from fiscal year 20 to 21 in your expenditures. And so the result, net result for the year was a small decrease in what we call your net position in this fund. And so again, fairly comparable results to the results that you had for fiscal year 19. This fund can be kind of hard to compare apples to apples if you were to compare your School Food Service Fund to your other governmental funds because this fund is accounted for on what we call the full accrual basis, which means that the liabilities related to OPEB and your pension liabilities are accounted for in this fund differently than they are in the governmental fund. So what you'll typically notice in this fund is the net income or loss that this fund has is reflected in the increase or decrease in cash and investments from one year to the next, and that is in fact what you see with this fund. So that wraps up the comments related to the financial results. Paige, why don't you walk us through the results from the compliance audit, and we'll open it up to questions?
Absolutely. So as we noted previously, in addition to the financial statement audit, we do also conduct an audit over federal and state programs, which are deemed to be major for compliance purposes. The criteria for determining these major programs is for involving standards and is based on various testing and coverage thresholds. So based on this analysis, we noted four federal major programs which were required to be audited under the current year audit. These were Special Education Cluster, the Education Stabilization Fund, the Coronavirus Relief Fund, and Supporting Effective Instruction. We've never reported findings as a result of our testing of these programs. It is important to note that much of the funding that was received in the two COVID-related programs was received without much instruction as to the use of the funding. Through our testing, we utilized the compliance supplements that were later released by NCDPI and the OMB as a basis for our testing. These compliance supplements set forth specific requirements and procedures for testing that ensure the funding was spent appropriately. The Finance Team was always great with explaining any variances that we may have noted, or any questions that we may have had, and always had the backup and support for how that funding was spent. Again, we noted no reportable findings as a result of this testing. We also evaluated all state programs to determine any that may qualify as a major program to be required to be tested in the current year. As a result of that process, we selected the state public school fund and tested this program in accordance with the published compliance supplements and guidelines. We had no reportable findings as a result of this testing from this program. And that brings us to the end of our presentation for this afternoon. If we're here for any questions, if there are any.
Anita?
My question's on the Food Service Fund. The food sales, and I look to the superintendent on this one. Is that because so much of our food service was free during this period of time? Didn't we increase the, didn't we increase the amount of free food during 2021?
So this is Angie, I can answer that question. All students were eligible, all children under the age of 18 living in Guilford County were eligible to receive
Yeah.
a free breakfast and free lunch every day, every day that we were in school. So yes, all meals were free served to students. We did, when we came back to school, we may have had some à la carte opportunities in some of our schools that students may have taken advantage of, or these could be the adult, the sale of meals to adults because we weren't able to provide those for free. So that's why you see that small number.
Yeah, that's what I thought it was. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do Pat or Diane have any questions?
No.
Kim?
When you mentioned that, that there may have been some variances, and the staff was able to explain maybe some questions you had, do you have an example of maybe something you would have questioned, and then the staff provided the proper information?
Absolutely. I had a feeling that question was coming as soon as I said that. So during our audit procedures, we look at all kinds of different ways that the funding could have been spent for the compliance audit and also for the financial statement audit. We have analytics on our side that we develop to come up with what we would expect the numbers to be for the current year. And if that expectation that we've come up with varies at all from within a threshold of what was actually the case, we inquire of, you know, the Finance Team and any supporting documents that there may be as to why the variance is there. In the current year and in the prior year, many of the variances that we noted were due to COVID because it's extremely hard to predict what we think the number should be based on the number of students, as we may have done in prior years. Because as we've heard tonight, students may be in school one day and, you know, purchasing meals and then not in school the next day, or different expenses may vary widely based on what schools are open or any COVID closures and things like that. So that's kind of what I was referring to when I mentioned any variances. It's not an incorrect variance, it's just different from what we might expect based on previous years. But as we've learned, there's nothing predictable about the pandemic and how it impacts everyone.
My other question is probably for Angie, I'm not sure. Is there a recommended amount of fund balance based on the number of students that we have in Guilford County that we should sustain or maintain?
So the local government commission does not establish a fund balance recommendation or fund balance level for school districts because we don't issue debt. So there's really no standard that's in place for that. You know, certainly, we would like to create, to build fund balance in case we have an emergency. However, you know, the way to build fund balance is to not spend the dollars that the county commissioners provide, and that certainly does not, does not appear favorable when they're asking the county commissioners for funding and then we're not spending it. So, you know, we try to balance out what makes sense and not carry too large of a fund balance.
Thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, thank you very much for doing this with Guilford County Schools. Always thank you to Angie Henry and her team and to the superintendent. This is why we are recognized for our accounting practices and management of taxpayer dollars. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we are now at the comments from the superintendent. We're a part of Dr. Oakley's report on the testing sites, and so we have done that. We are now at committee reports, and I will hand over to our Policy Committee Chair, Betty Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the Policy Committee meeting in January, the committee voted to send one revised policy out for a 30-day public comment. This policy is 4150, which is the school assignment. The purpose of this revision is to align our policy with the electronic school met online choice process. This revision removes outdated timelines and detailed information about the process, which is online. These revisions are necessary, and we need those done immediately. And that is because of the fact that we need to align ourselves with the policy, and we will do some extensive engagement process in the future. Again, the process we propose of the revisions are to update the policy and to align our digital system and relate the timeline. As a reminder, this policy will come back to the board for discussion at the March 8th meeting after the public comment have had the chance to offer comments.
Anita?
Is a motion in order or needed? I was going to move that.
Okay. Well, so it's going out, and we'll come back and approve it then? All right, thank you, Ms. Jenkins. And while we're on policy, I think it's appropriate to announce in advance of a meeting that I do think we need to adhere to the policy that we have around 30 minutes for public speaking. I think it's confusing to people when they think we're picking and choosing when people can do that, and we just really haven't. We've just allowed that. If any board member wants to make a recommendation to extend that, but we do have a policy that we are not abiding by. And so that the public knows that we will be abiding by our policy at our next meeting, and, you know, that we have staff, and we have students, and we have parents, and we have the community that are waiting to get to an agenda item, and it could be two to three hours. I mean, it can, we've had 27 speakers and 30 speakers and 15 speakers in the past. And while we'd love to hear from everyone, we have business that we have to take care of as well, and we have an opportunity to hear from the public via email and public speaking and other kinds of communication. So just so that we know in advance of our next meeting, okay? All right, we are now at board member comments, and I'll start with you, Ms. Erby. I think you're right here beside me. Are you not ready? You may go to Board Member Jenkins.
I don't want to hold it up now. I'm ready. Happy New Year to everyone, and welcome back to school. It's good to see everyone. I just want to announce two events that are happening in Guilford County. Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service is happening on Sunday, January 16th, at the Student Center at North Carolina A&amp;T State University, parking at the Truist Stadium, open to the public between 1:00 and 3:00, and A&amp;T students between 3:00 and 5:00. This is a day of service where people get to participate with their local other nonprofits and do a whole joint community service day. And at High Point University Pro Bono Physical Therapy Clinic, there's a free public health screening that will be happening. They're saying, "Join us for physical and mental wellness checks and learn about ways to improve your overall health. Also enjoy informational boosts from the Guilford Community Care Network, the NAACP, YMCA, and the YWCA." Martin Luther King Jr. Day, actually, that Monday, January 17th, between 8:00 and 12:00 and 1:00 and 4:00, which will be at the High Point University Pro Bono Physical Therapy Clinic located at 1030 Moore Loop Road in High Point. So I will be participating in both of these events, and hopefully I'll see some of you in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Cam. Betty?
Thank you. Happy New Year to each and every one of you. I would like to thank our partnership with Austin Landscaping and also the Deliverance Temple Worship Center for allowing me to assist in supplying Christmas gifts for 37 families in District 7. I thank you so very much. Also, the COVID testing clinic that was held at the high school, they did a phenomenal job, and I thank our superintendent for allowing them to partnership with us and to get our COVID testing done in a timely manner. Thanks to all who supported the Guilford County School Transportation Department with the superintendent. We're thinking out of the box for various ways how to get our precious cargo to school. We know that it was a challenge, but we thank you, the superintendent, that Contreras, for your leadership in this endeavor, and all the ones who supported you and worked with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anita?
Just happy New Year, everyone. I want to take just a few minutes to remember Sharon Osment. She was a good friend to me. She was honest, open, forthcoming with whatever information I asked her for. She got it in a form that was easy for me to understand, and she probably, she taught me so much about school budgets, and she will be sorely missed. And Dale Metz, what can I say? I've never seen anyone with such a heart for our exceptional students, and he lived it. He didn't talk it, he lived it. And I remember them both fondly. As everyone knows, I'm not a fan of closing schools. But we still have, the superintendent still has emergency powers in effect. We've never rescinded that. There's still We've never rescinded that, they're still there. So yes, she can make a decision to close schools and doesn't need to involve the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
Again, I wanna again acknowledge the great loss of Sharon Osment and Dale Metz. Those two greats that will be deeply missed. I wish the new year had started out a little more, or coming back from Christmas had come back with a more positive situation. And I do ask everybody to try and understand that we are in difficult times. And on a positive note, I have to give a huge shout out to our Lady Falcons, who won the Haco Championship, and to Coach Rachel Clark for all the great things she's doing with these young ladies. They're rocking it, so.
Awesome, thank you. Winston?
Happy New Year, just, I think just a word of thanks to all of our students, all of our educators, and all of our staff for persevering, for parents who are also persevering. And in the midst of some of the negativity and vitriol, there's lots of positive things that I do still see and witness. I really appreciate the faith leaders this evening. And I was on two Zoom calls Friday and, I don't know, Monday, at some point, with various faith leaders wanting to know how they can help, how they can, can they help with buses, you know, how can they galvanize congregations or other capacity? And so people have stepped up from all quarters to say, "We're here, we're supporting you. We want you to be successful." And so for those of you who worked all weekend and all week and all over Christmas break, I know you did, thank you for all of that time and energy. And please know there's lots of forces out in the community that really do support you and appreciate you, even though sometimes the critics are the loudest voices. But we can use those voices to spur ourselves forward, to be innovative. And I think as long as we all stay focused on the kids, who are working probably harder than any of us, and will certainly face the consequences of this time more than any of us will, when we stay focused on them, we will, we'll do right by them. So thank you.
Thank you, Winston. And again, just wanting to lift up the memory and legacy of Oz, who was just amazing in this district. And Dale Metz, I mean, both people are truly legacies. Dale's story is so inspiring to hear about his vision and what he wanted for children that he felt were not getting the education that they needed. And I think it helped make Guilford County schools a place where people with unique and special children wanted to have their children here. And he was an incredible part of that. And I think, again, Angie Henry is a part of Sharon Osment's legacy. They were partners in crime and, you know, she was and not crime, that's right, and both recognized.
And no crimes, no crimes were committed.
I'm sorry, I know, I put that out there. And so we'll get emails about, you know, find the money, and the money's hidden. And Dixon Hughes hasn't found the money, and Angie hasn't found the money, and Oz didn't find the money. So anyway, thank all of them. And I just wanna lift up two of my, two of my favorite sort of arts and culture educators in this district, Dorinda Carver, who has been an arts educator in this district for a very long time. I've known her for 25 years, and she was at Archer. I think she's at Western Guilford High School. I think she left my district, and she's at Western Guilford. But an amazing art teacher. And Donna Brown Jessup. Donna is, she has done the choreography for our Freedom Schools. She is at Kaiser, she teaches dance and chorus and theater, and she is amazing. So those are just two for all of my friends who are just like, you didn't say me. Those are just two of my favorites. And the gifts from the students are amazing. I'm really gonna use them to highlight them in my house. So thank you very much. And Pat and Diane do not have any comments, so if we, all right, say a second. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Contreras and staff.